We called a February meeting to order. If it would, I'd like to welcome everybody and do the invocation if you would do it, Mr. Gill.
Yes. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you not, Lord, just to ask you for wisdom and grace and strength, Lord. And we just pray that you be with us throughout this meeting, Lord. Just give us the knowledge, Lord, that we need to conduct this meeting, Lord Jesus, for it be the benefit of our citizens. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Let's do the pledge.
I plead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need to approve the agenda. Only thing I know we need to change, we need to add, Ms. Jamie needs to speak for a moment.
And Mr. Kevin.
And Mr. Kevin, okay. So I just need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. She whispered. Need to approve the minutes. Everybody said time to look at them. Doug does an excellent job typing out these minutes every month. He does a great job. Really concise. Everything looks in order, I need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? I thought he seconded. Approval of the minutes. I mean, the financial. I'm looking at the wrong thing. My glasses. All the financials look in order, we need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? All in favor? All right. All right, let's go with the, you want to go ahead and talk? Yeah, then we'll go ahead and get you out the way.
I have some information that I'll put together for y'all. You may already have, which I see some of the same stuff. So, um, we've been invited to a collaborative effort in the spirit of regionalism to participate in a joint development authority. And Nikki, I think you and Ms. Christine were here back in September of twenty-two. I had come and made the same kind of plea, hey, let's look into this because of the job tax credit benefits for manufacturing and distribution jobs. Well, Suzanne Reynolds, who's a Miller County native, works in Early County now on development work. And we see a lot of each other at these state meetings. There's also an organization called Locate South Georgia. And what that is, it's a collaborative of all the southern Georgia rural counties working together to solve our regional problems. And of course, a huge part of that is economic development. So we spend a lot of time talking about that. There's some benefits that the state offers to counties that are part of a joint development authority. And the statute that establishes these authorities is from nineteen sixty-three, and it's basically the same powers that are given to the individual county development authorities. So the idea back in twenty-two, when I came to the board, and that didn't happen because one of the counties of the three that we were trying to reinvigorate, the Southwest Georgia Development Authority, that had been inactive for about twenty-five years. And that's just because of circumstances. People change positions, change roles, dynamics of economic development were changing during that timeframe. So we haven't been, Miller County has not been participating in a joint development authority for almost twenty-five years now. So Suzanne and I got together at the request of our regional Georgia Department of Economic Development person from the state. And she was really highlighting the benefits of some mutual collaboration between Early County and Miller County. So we pulled the template, Suzanne and I pulled the template that the state offers, which is what you have with the bylaws and constitution of a joint development authority. Yes, and then the resolution is also from that same template that the state offers. And what it would do to benefit Miller County is because we're a tier three, if y'all will notice on that map, we kind of stick out like a sore thumb. So I highlighted in one of your packet pages, it's, it has the DC Department of County Affairs logo. And the highlighter did not show up well when I copied. But you'll see there that those are the, that's the methodology to rank individual counties. We have really low unemployment. And we have median salaries. And so those are some of the components that give rise to us being a tier three. And Early County's a tier one, so they get better tax credits than us. But if we're in a joint development authority with Early County and we were to be able to recruit a new manufacturer or a new distribution center, we could offer up to four thousand dollars per new job in tax credits to that employer. So we would utilize that to help incentivize a manufacturer or a distribution company facility to locate in Miller County. At tier three, we have to create up to fifteen new jobs. And that's only, I think, seventeen fifty per job. So there's a big difference in that tier one and tier three category. And I think your last two sheets I pulled from the state's website, and I tried to highlight those as well. But there's some extra benefit given to, I think there's a five hundred dollar credit per job if you are in a joint development authority. And then because we can utilize Early County's tier one status, that's an addition, it lowers the number of jobs that we have to create in order to get the tax benefits which are higher. So I had checked with our state representative with the Georgia Economic Development. And generally, the joint development authorities, which are all over the state of Georgia, they don't have a staff person. It's run by the people that are appointed by the county commission that usually have some type of manufacturing background or economic development background. And those constitution and bylaws dictate the decision-making arm of that. They usually work in close coordination with the county development authority and sometimes the downtown development authorities as well.
So this ain't going to cost anything?
It's not going to cost anything, no. And there's, it's really simple, so it seems like, why this is so easy, why we haven't, we already done it? It generally can be used as a funding mechanism, like a conduit of sorts for the county in order to recruit and create new jobs. And then us utilize those tier one tax credits instead of our tier three tax credits. Mr. Kevin is chairman of the county development authority. And their attorney, Mr. Danny, looked over the template that I just put, filled in. Suzanne and I filled in the early Miller language. And I don't think there were any sticking points.
We, we just say that we have to vote on it because of separate authority. So we would just be, I mean, I'll be a representative and then bring back anything to our authority if it needs to be.
So you and him would be our representative, who would be the representative from Early County?
There is, let's see, Mr. Steele, maybe, Howstil? Let me check that.
That the grain, that's the corn grain guy?
That sounds correct, yes, sir. So they're voting in March on the same resolution bylaws and constitution. Yes, Mr. Howstil with Southern AgCon is, who is likely to be one of the two members for Early County.
So you just need us to do this at the next meeting?
Well, I mean, if, if you need to check on it, but I was hopeful that y'all could adopt the resolution tonight just to establish that joint development authority because that would get us one step closer to being able to put Miller Counties and then Early Counties in the next few weeks into the package that we submit to the state in order to be recognized as a new joint development.
Has our lawyer looked over it?
He's got it, but he hasn't got that.
I understand.
I don't, I don't see any problem, does anybody see any problem? About, so just let the law, just let him say everything.
I mean, if I can get it back, like maybe tomorrow or whatever, I can just do the text and, and y'all can agree to it.
And then we can just read the resolution at the next. Is that okay?
Yeah. I will, and Doug's been privy to some confidential work with the state. We are in active recruitment mode right now for Miller County for a manufacturer, something that we do not already have. That could be a huge catalyst for some economic development opportunities here in the county. So this particular resolution and the formation of a joint development authority would be allowing us to offer some extra incentives. And we're one of three cities, counties in the United, or in the state, rather, that this company is looking at. So we're really close. Anything that I can do to keep moving that ball forward and the momentum centered on Miller County is going to be beneficial, so.
And I asked James some questions because I had some questions about, you know, because we've all been kind of going out there trying to recruit businesses too. I just wanted to make sure that this was going to prohibit us from also. So if we went out there recruited, we would go through either Mr. Kevin or them or both. So I mean, it's not going to hinder us from doing it.
Well, all in all, Mr. Kevin and I collaborate. And this joint development authority would just be another opportunity to collaborate. And as well, the state looks favorably on the communities that are participating in that spirit of collaboration. So with us, Miller County being a member of Locate South Georgia now, which is actively recruiting and going to shop shows and going to other trade shows to try to find those niche manufacturers in order to create jobs and just all about quality of life in our rural communities. They're going to look favorably on this. I had talked to Gerald Green, it was one of the snow days, he and I were on the phone. And he was real excited that we were talking about this again because it had been really important twenty-five years ago when we were doing that. One of Doug's questions too was like, where's the funding come from? If there ever is an opportunity for a grant, then we could write the grant underneath the, the name of the joint development authority if it's mutually beneficial or if, you know, the joint developed, or the county development authority would still retain its authority and the downtown development authority retains its authority as well, so.
So this, if I'm understanding it correctly, with, with us tying into Early County, it would give Miller County two thousand dollars plus more possible tax incentive for the people coming? Because we, we'll be up to forty-five hundred, I think you said.
Well, yes, sir, it'd be up to four thousand per new job.
Right now, we're like at seventeen hundred with us at tier three, something like that?
Yes, and we have to create fifteen jobs in order to trigger that seventeen fifty, whereas we only have to have two new full-time jobs in that same calendar year to trigger that four thousand dollar tax credit.
So it's just a really taste of your carrot for people to come, for businesses to come then.
Yes, sir, especially if we're talking about a manufacturing facility that's going to create fifty jobs. Anything we can do to help incentivize, and since these are state incentives, we wouldn't have to be rolling out the, hey, let's talk about some local tax abatements. You know, that money would be able to stay here. And plus, if we're creating fifty jobs, those people hopefully would want to live here and they would shop here and essentially spend their money here.
And that's not going to affect, like I say, if we do recruit businesses here, we're not going to have to say, well, let's, let's put that business in Early County or let's put it in Miller County, that's going to be what we get is what we get.
Now, the, the, the vision for joint development authorities is that we will be working collaboratively on recruiting manufacturing facilities and creating jobs where people would go to Early County to do stuff, come to Miller County and do stuff if we're in opposite counties with siding. Okay, I appreciate y'all letting me talk about this. If there's ever any questions or if you want to talk to someone else within the state, I can definitely pass along contacts.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank y'all.
All right, we're going to move on to old business, the county ordinances. We were all going to look at them last month and we're going to approve them this month?
We also had the addition of the woman's privacy ordinance.
Yeah.
I sent it out to you through email. It basically just affirms what the sex meaning of a male and female is and it also protects the woman's restroom, change room, or, or, like if it's, which we don't have EMS anymore, but if a woman wants to sleep overnight, you know, twenty-four hours a day, it dictates where they sleep versus, you know, we wouldn't make them sleep with men or nothing like that. So that's basically, Mr. Keith got that in the ordinance for me. And I'll put that in there, I want if you've had a chance to look at it.
Y'all, so we just need a motion to adopt?
To adopt all, but if you want to do that one as well.
I got some questions about some of them if we.
All right, go ahead.
The, the one that, that I was, see if I can get back to where I need to get at now. It's the public, the public gatherings. That was the, one of the big ones that I had a problem with. And I'm a, I'm a guy that I'm, I'm a small government. I don't like, you got to have government, but I don't like to have people be too involved in everybody's business. And on the public gatherings, and, and it's specifically about parades and stuff like that. And I know, and it's under section F, it says assemblies, parades, and picketing. And I'm completely in agreement with us getting permits. And I, I think that's, that's needed, we need to have control over going on. But under assemblies, parades, and picketing, it says all assemblies, parades, and picketing shall be peaceful and unattended by noise-bosters. And there should be no yelling, shouting, singing, clapping, chanting, or making any. How many parades have you seen where they wouldn't sing and clap and stuff like that? And to me, that's just an overreach. I can see where they might need to be a decimal level. And I, I don't know how parades work here, I'm near about sixty years old and I go into a bunch of them. I don't go to a bunch of parades no more. But every parade I've been to, you have a fire truck with a sirens going on. And so if, I don't want us to adopt something that's so narrow-minded that makes us look like a bunch of knuckleheads. And I think that section right there is, if, if you're going to have to have a parade that follows this, you're going to have to have a bunch of people who can't talk, walking around holding hands. I mean, it's, to me, it's just overreach. And I, I don't think we need to have that, that phrase right in there. I could, I could be okay with a decimal level or something like that because you have churches and they'll be singing Christmas carols at Christmas parades and all that kind of stuff. So, I mean, that's my opinion. And I just don't think we need to have that, that phrase in there. And y'all tell me if I'm wrong, y'all tell me I'm wrong, fine, I've spoken.
I'm pretty sure we just got that off of, uh, the Georgia.
It was pretty much from Seminole and me and the attorney kind of worked on it, so. But I mean, it's like I say, y'all are the ultimate ones. Whatever y'all decide, if you want to take it out, then we'll, we'll take it out.
Well, I, I mean, that, that's, that's the, when I, when I read it, I, I'm thinking, gosh, that's, and, and it would probably never be enforced, literally. But we're, we're talking folks here that I, I know some, I know, for a long time, I've known everybody else here for a while. And I don't think we'd want that. But who's to say in twenty years, you might have five people here that wants to crack down? And I, I don't want, I don't want to put a law out that it's got my name where I signed to vote yes on it that in the future can be used to stomp on free speech because we've had enough of that in these last four years. You know, I want people to be able to speak their mind, have a parade, have a big time. And let's just don't get caught up in the weeds about, I mean, when I got to reading it, that can't even make any loud noise of any means, whether it be a voice, hand clapping, stomping, or by mechanical means, such as intent to nor disturb the peace. Every parade I've been on will have floats with a karaoke machine and folks will be singing into it and stuff like that, so, I mean, that's my opinion.
Is that the only one you got? You got some more?
I think there was, there's one, one more, uh, under, and it's sort of the same, same frame of me not wanting to overstep under civil emergencies. And it's section five. And, and again, us, us here, you know, I'm, okay, it's under the emergency power section. And under civil emergencies, I know you can, you can declare, well, we can't be out, I can't think of the word right.
Curfew.
Curfew, stuff like, hunky-dory. Says ones enforce all rules, laws, and regulations related to emergency management, fine. Number two, I got a problem with this. And number three, seize, take for temporary use, or condemn any private property for the protection of the public. In my opinion, the constitution don't stop when there's an emergency. And I don't think we need to be able to seize it. And then number three, sell, lend, or give or distribute any or all such property or supplies among the inhabitants of the county and maintain a strict account of property or supplies distributed and funds received for such property and supplies. I don't think we need to have it to where, and again, I don't think any of us here would do that, but I'm thinking in the future, them folks that wrote the constitution back in seventeen seventy-six, I think they were inspired by God. And it's a little bit, it don't, ain't got a bunch of words, but it's relevant today. And I want this here to be relevant in twenty years where we might have some people that don't think the way we do now, that try to seize stuff. You know, try to declare an emergency and seize stuff. I just don't think we need to have those, those in there. And again, that's my, I'm a big small government guy. I don't think we need to overreach. Whenever, and I, I think back at Hurricane Katrina, back whenever, forever ago that was, the police went around trying to get people's handguns and shotgun for no reason, just tried to get them. And, you know, this here, in my opinion, gives the ability to do things like that here. And I don't want to have that around here, again, in my opinion.
All right, anybody else got anything? What about if we vote to adopt with the changes that, that he, you want to get with him? And we'll change them and we just will vote to adopt them with the wording changes?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Need a motion to adopt with the word changes?
Make a motion?
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Tax assessor appointment?
So Mr. Mike and Mr. Williams here, they, they, last, you know, last month, they said they had a couple of people they had talked to. I guess y'all talked to the certain people and you want to go ahead and get them and update?
Yeah, I, I made contact, Ty Godfrey. He said he'd be glad, sir.
So we need to make a motion to?
A point.
A point?
And I think it's a three-year, y'all do three-year?
It, it would be for, uh, like forty-one months. You know, that way we would all be ending on June the thirtieth. Or you know what, you would have.
Different year.
You know, it, it would be like forty or forty-one, you know, it just, it has to be three to six years. And if you, but you, you can, to June the thirtieth of, uh, twenty-seven, I think, or twenty-eight, twenty. But, but you can look at our terms, Doug. But, but like I said, we, we would like for it to work out where everybody ends on June the thirtieth. And it would be staggered from I guess.
I need a motion to approve, Ty Godfrey, to the tax assessor board.
Y'all make a motion?
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, now the personal policy and procedures and the purchasing policy adoption.
Well, you know, I gave this to y'all in December, then in January, y'all, well, Mr. Keith had just come on, so we pushed it back till February to see, and, and we just need to either get a motion or we need to make changes or have y'all, if you'd like to do it.
Anybody got any changes? I need a motion to adopt?
Make a motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, new business. Commissioner packet into minutes. You want to talk about that, a second?
Uh, what this is, is when they brought the ordinances up, I looked at it. And, um, I know everybody's been seeing on news about the, the issue of people going into women's bathrooms, the men that think they're a woman to go into women's bathrooms and things like that. And I asked Doug, is there anything in Miller County that protects ladies in our county property? And he said there wasn't. And I reached out to a, a organization that we use at our church, and they had something they'd already had for other situations just like this. So I was seeing it and I gave it to Doug. And this just, it identifies, it's strange as this, this world is. It identifies what a male and female is and how you can't go into the, most time it's males in the female bathrooms and has all that legal jargon, but it protects any lady that goes in any bathroom. We have a law that says, I don't care what you think you are, what God made you, you can't go into an office of bathroom and cause problems there. And that's what this ordinance that I proposed, that I got to Doug, and I think the lawyers looked at it and, and convinced it down, and that's what this is here.
We don't pass that. We don't put that on.
Mr. Keith, what we're talking about, remember you'd called me about the.
The commission, the packet.
I'm on the whole wrong page, I'm sorry, guys. Okay, take two. And again, this goes back to me being a, I want to be transparent with everybody because I can remember sitting out there and wondering what we were talking about, what people were talking about up here. And this is the, uh, the packet that we get, all this stuff here. It will become available to the public whenever the minutes are finished up. It's within two or three days and it'll be, it's already open record request to where people can ask for it and get it. But this will just go ahead and put it out there all ready to where you can just go and look at it. And then y'all can see what we work with, unless it was some confidential stuff or personnel stuff, things like that. Y'all won't get that. But then, I've always wondered, when we had these meetings, how come they could vote on stuff so quick when I didn't know what was going on out there? And I just want everybody to be on the same, it might not be as fast as we get it, but y'all will be able to see where we got our information from to help the public realize that we, we are studying the, the situation and find out the facts before we just vote however we do up here. So that was the purpose of this, excuse me for my mistake while.
So I guess we'll just, we'll talk about all this, we'll talk about this and we'll, at the next meeting, we'll vote on that.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's, again, I'm just trying to, I can remember me sitting out there for several years and wondering how the heck they make them decisions so quick whenever, I don't even know what they was talking about.
Right.
And then this would let people know there is a method behind what's going on. You know, when I was a lady and got to look, oh, well, I understand now. I can see where they made the decisions at, now I didn't know what was going on. And then that will help the public know too. And that, that's where I'm at, just, I want, I want everybody to be as informed as I am within, within the bounds of the law without being confidential, talking about personnel, stuff like that, you know? Anything that's open record requestable.
Right.
And some counties do it, some counties don't, so it, it would be up to y'all to do it. I mean, it's, it can be done.
All right, moving on, we'll go to joint, House Bill five eighty-one educational.
Yes, sir, so you know, the school board was here at the, was it the last meeting or the December meeting? And they, they basically informed you that they're not opting out of House Bill five eighty-one. The city's not opting out, and of course, we're not opting out because that's what the majority of the citizens voted for. I do think though that with some of the counties around us that's really hadn't decided and can't make up their mind, they're kind of causing confusion amongst the citizens. So I think what we should do is have a meeting with the school board, the, I talked to Mr. Mike and them. We can get the school board, the city, the tax assessor board, I've talked to Libby. We can get the tax commissioner and you guys all, and we just have one joint meeting. Invite the public and kind of inform them of the House Bill five eighty-one. Because what that does, it kind of limits your property tax. I think it's to a three percent per year or so. The way we're going to have to offset the tax basis, we're, you know, there's the thing called FLOST, which is a one-cent sales tax, just like SPOST, E-SPOST and all that. So we need to get that out to the public to let them know, hey, it's either we do this and everybody pays or we raise the mill rate because nobody paid.
So we would go up, say we do one, another one-cent sales tax, but we would roll the millage rate back?
Yeah, you have to roll the bill rate back. Say if you collected a certain amount on, on your E-SPOST, your, your FLOST. Yeah, you have to roll the mill rate back. Say if you collected a certain amount on, on your E-SPOLOST, I mean, your, your, uh, FLOST, it would have, you would have to roll that back to offset, you cannot have.
We already do that with FLOST every year. There's a formula in there.
So we've already.
And so there would just be two in there.
We already doing it in March, so what are y'all talking about, joining us?
No, that's E-SPOLOST. This is FLOST, that, that's the property tax side, that's had, didn't, did nothing to do with education.
It would affect y'all too, though, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it would.
No, they, they won't get, the, the school system cannot get FLOST.
They won't get none of that.
They get E-SPOLOST, but, I mean, I'm talking about the taxpayer.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, we're not.
Yeah, this is, this is different than E-SPOLOST.
We won't do this until the twelfth end of the year, because we still got, Thomas County is the first county that's, that's fixing to go up.
So it wouldn't take effect until twenty-sixth?
Yeah, yeah. But it would help, i- it's just like, just like this.
So it just makes people coming, everybody coming through to buy something.
If you come from Atlanta by cash, they're paying our property tax.
And if you don't, and we only can go, only goes up three percent, then the mill rate's gonna have to.
And if we need.
So we just need to let people understand that.
Yes.
So we just need to get a.
The FLOST is very important.
Joint educational.
Is this, is this apply only to home? I think that's just homestead exemptions.
We're gonna find that out now.
We gotta find that out. I, I, I think, I think, but I ain't one hundred percent.
Only about a third of your taxpayers are gonna be affected by this.
Yes, yes. So if, so if there's a, if there's a thousand, taxpayer, three hundred of them are gonna be affected or something like that, right?
Yeah.
What is it? Is, is it homestead and four acres? What is, is it something?
Well, no, if you have homestead exemption, it's regardless, you know? Like you, if your house sits on five, ten, twenty acres, but all these people have Kubas and things like that.
They can't put that in, none of that, no, I, I suppose, I think it's your house and four acres, I think. So like, if your house sat on ten or fifteen acres, it would only, you could only put four acres of that.
So, so you're probably talking about, this will be help about fifteen hundred people. But, but like everybody that's in other categories, it will not affect them, it's just homestead exemptions.
Right. So, so you don't think it's gonna hurt us, though?
No, no, but, but, uh, this will be challenged in court eventually, you know? And, and I think what's really gonna hurt us, not us, I'm not, I'm talking about Georgia, is some counties can be in it, and some. And I think the courts will come down and say, you're, either everybody's in, or everybody's out.
I gotcha.
Because they put up doubts for schools and all that in there.
Yeah.
And then everybody's, so, so it's like, like A C C G told me, it's, it's, it's uncharted waters, and really, nobody knows what to do, I mean.
Right.
But you did say you reached out to other counties?
Yes, right, nobody has decided.
Nobody's not.
Thomas County's the only, Thomas and Washington are the only two that I know of that are, that are fully, forced into it.
Yeah, but nobody's out.
Nobody's out, just doesn't get in there.
Yeah, okay. All right, moving on, the tire reimbursement.
So, um, about two weeks ago, or maybe, maybe longer, we got a call for this young lady that damaged her tire on Busch Dairy Road. Um, I included the police report in there, and, um, I think last week, we actually got a bill from, from Hall Tire, or, or Kevin Hall's, where they went and replaced two tires. Now, um, I, I know that we've damaged, rims have been damaged, tires in the past have been damaged, and y'all have never paid for it. So I mean, if you do it now, you're gonna start a precedence, you just, I mean, I know Andy, I got on, he went out there and fixed the, the road. And you wanna tell them how it was, where, where it was at?
Well, what I saw was the road was there, but there was a driveway there, and there was, you know, there was a wash there. But the car had to be pretty much slammed off the road, you know, when they run through it. I mean, the, the highway was, highway was there, but we repaired the driveway, repaired the wash, you know, and put some aggregate right there to drop off of the road. But pretty much the asphalt, the white line was still, you know, the white line was still there. So I mean, the car had to have been halfway off the road, to my opinion, now I wasn't there. But it just looked like the main car ran off the road and hit a rough driveway.
And it, it states there that, that, uh, the police report says, says one tire, but then when you see the bill, you'll, you see the two tires, so. I don't know where the second tire come from, but e- e- either way, we just need to decide how we wanna proceed on this.
You got any thoughts? Anybody?
I would make sure that these vendors just don't assume that we are gonna be responsible, send us a bill.
No, I agree, but I also agree, there should be no reason why people are hitting potholes, and it, being, they're being so big that it's busting their tires. I mean, I'm sorry, but there should be no reason for that, because I've hit several myself, and I, I mean, that, there's, that's not okay.
In the pictures that it put out, Andy, it hasn't, that been patched a couple of times, that spot there?
Uh, the driveway, you know, had rocks put in it, you know, at a different time, but, you know, as far as the road, there wasn't, you know, they didn't get a pothole. Not where they told me it was now, you know, I mean, I didn't see a pothole there. It was just a rough driveway, is what it was. But yeah, they bent some rocks put there before, it's been fixed before, but water, water runs off the road down that driveway, it's a pretty steep driveway. And it wa, you know, it just washes there.
Mr. Keith, I think with the, the pictures that I put on there, and I think me and Andy, when we talked, I think it was more down toward, 'cause, 'cause in the police report, you know, it doesn't really show anything that says five hundred from the county line. But where, where Andy's talking about is down there where that guy used to have that shop.
Yeah.
Which is a little further down, it's a little bit more than five hundred yards or feet from the line.
We pitched a pothole there, the bridge was one.
You can see.
That's what I was looking at in the picture, look, you've been passed multiple times there, you know, so.
The potholes we pitched were on the other side of the road. I, I can't pinpoint where, exactly where it happened, come out of that day.
You weren't there when it happened, yes.
And the police report said they were going, I think, east, and the road runs north and south. So I kinda figured it must've, you know, maybe meant they were going toward Dawson Lane. So I mean, I don't, you know, I can't pinpoint the, you know, exact spot.
And then in court, the police report doesn't really give you, you know, an area.
My, my recommendation would be not, not to pay it, but to definitely need to know where Andy can go and fix these piles as quickly as possible. So it doesn't happen again.
We've come up with a plan that we're gonna, we're gonna fix them.
All right.
Does the county have any kind of, uh, schedule about when the county is liable, like what Ms. Nikki said? And if it's, if you hit one, it's bad enough to tear your car up because of the county having been doing their stuff? Or if it's just, you know, if you run off the road and hit something and tear it, but do we, do we have any kind of guidance on that about when we all?
It's always been, if you hit it, it's, we just.
You have to look.
Yeah. I mean, it's something we need to, to look into.
I agree.
We hired, you know, got a couple of people hired on, so we gonna try to do better. You know, we're real shorthanded, you know, we kinda scattered, but we gonna try to do better on, you know, figure at least maybe a monthly trip, you know, around the county, or if we need to do more, we'll do more. But, you know, it's just been, catch them as recruited, and, um, we've been working, you know, we working on potholes, but, you know, it's just, but we'd be in short hand, you know, some you just have to catch when you can.
I mean, and I know that there are gonna be poth, I mean, I know there are gonna be holes, and that's inevitable, but for them to get so big that they're messing up somebody's car, that's what I'm talking about, is that they should, they should never be allowed to get that big.
And, and I think before we put, like Mr. Keith, I think we should put something like that in, but before we do that, we need to get a, we, we need to get a plan to fix these roads, 'cause if we do it right now, we don't have, then we're just gonna be buying tires every week.
Yeah.
I mean, anybody can go and say, I hit this tire, or hit this pothole, and we need to replace the tire.
Probably best just to have somebody to ride the county routes to see.
Mm-hmm.
And make sure.
Have a schedule, what road to ride.
Yeah.
And maybe even take pictures of the, show the bad spots.
Get the hot mix, and patch that road, patch another road, and just go start patching, have, have maybe one or two guys, that's all their job is, is to patch. I'd ask the sheriff if he had anybody there.
Most sides of the road, usually, I try to get the mowing crew, you know, you mow, you mow this road, then you turn around and go back down it, fix the signs, and then go back and fix the pothole. But then we get shorthanded with them, and we don't have one guy mowing, but that was sort of the plan. But then, you know, during the wintertime, we're not mowing, so it kinda gets a little foggy behind. But, um, that's usually the plan, is when you got the mowing crew out there, they mow this road, stop, go back, fix straighten up all the signs, and then fix the pothole.
Could, could we have one where somebody's going out there, and like you say, if you see a pothole, you, you have like a white?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, don't allow a mowing crew to do your pothole.
Somebody circles, and then the, the next crew, the pothole crew comes back and says, okay, well, they circled this one, let's fit, you know what I'm saying? And then, then if they see something else.
Well, you would. I do it in orange, I do it in orange.
Well, you know, just circle it, where you say, okay, well, this is encircled, I gotta get this one, or, ah, that one's not bad enough yet, you know what I'm saying? Then being diamond masks, we would make sure it's all put in diamond masks.
Yeah, and not allowing a mowing crew.
That's, yeah, 'cause that's their job.
Somebody, somebody designated just two.
Four of that.
Yes, yeah. And then when he's not doing that, he can help do other things.
But he'll be pretty busy.
He'll be, he'll be fairly busy around here.
It'd take a year to patch everything.
Maybe longer.
Longer, probably.
I reckon, um, again, I'm just gonna ask y'all the question, 'cause I'm a new guy at this. Could we table the question for paying for the tire until we go out and look at the situation where it occurred at? 'Cause I wanna be able to make a informed decision.
Well, they fixed it now.
Well, I mean, you can see where it was, you can't see where it is.
Do we know exactly where it was?
I, I don't know, they had a pothole at the bridge, you know, wasn't nothing serious, you know, like you'd run in it and tear up something. And I think there was, right past the bridge, there's a little brick house, we pitched a little pothole there, but they were in what I'd call the, the north lane, you know? And all that, the only thing I, the other I saw was that driveway, the one into that mechanic shop.
Maybe you could ask the rest, you know, the officers.
We can get it off this report, I'm sure, yeah.
Obviously, it does, I mean, just as five hundred feet from it, and I can say, I.
He might could go out and show you, yeah.
The only thing I can see in that area is right across from a house, was only one that Mr. Keith saw was on the side of the road.
Yeah, that, that's what it looked to me like, it'd never be off the road, and when I saw it, I said, well, they, they were, I mean, the pothole part of the white line was gone 'cause a pothole was there, you know? I said, that was, that's not where you're normally driving unless, you know, something is happening, your car dropped something or something.
We just need to be transparent. If we do it, we're gonna need to do it.
That's right.
From this point forward.
That's what I'm getting at. I, I wanna see, see where it occurred at, and we're gonna need to develop a policy and procedure for going forward, you know? And, and I don't, we can't just go throwing out money, I, I'm, and I'm, I'm not accusing nothing at all, but I wonder how one tire turned into two tires? Stuff like that, you know, and I wanna find out more information, probably, before I'm com- comfortable in voting either, either way, you know?
I agree.
No, we can do that, if you can find out.
I'll, I'll get with, sure, if we can get Musgrove to take us out with.
All right.
So we're not even sure that?
We don't even know exactly where it happened.
Okay, well, we need to make sure, I think.
Yeah.
Because Andy's saying it one place, and the picture showing another place, so I wanna be sure that we're, and if it's very obvious that, that we were at fault, then we can handle that. But if it's, you know, questionable on the side of the road, we don't know that, so.
And then, and then the police report says one tire, and we get a bill for two tires.
Yeah.
Just two things not adding up, yeah.
All right. Departments, do you want to send a report?
Yeah, everything's running normal. We haven't really increased or had to increase.
Anything? All right. Department reports?
There are new packets, and if any of them's here that's got anything to say. Debbie, you wanna talk again?
Can you put in the packet about the men?
About who?
The men's court.
Um, no, because I thought, I mean, you talked about the third or the sixth, I didn't know what day.
I think we're gonna get in the whole both dates.
Was that March, or was that February?
March.
Okay, so March the third or the sixth, okay. That's the reason I did, 'cause I thought it was past that day. You know, 'cause we talked about it, first, but January, we in January, and I was.
That's gonna take all day?
No, it's at night.
At night?
It's probably gonna be nine thirty or six, seven, eight, seven.
And you gonna feed us?
Y'all agreed to it last meeting, it's not a date.
Uh, we don't know.
March third.
March the third, through the sixth, you waiting on the guy.
Third or the sixth, not, not.
It's the third or the sixth, okay. I'll probably be at the beach.
Y'all all agree to go?
I know it.
We'll be there.
We'll be there. We'll be smiling, too.
We gotta find out. Have you talked to the city to sign, I mean?
We don't have to have them, though, do we? We do have to have them. Okay. And you gonna make sure they're there?
Yes.
Great. Oh, I'm gonna be there, I'm gonna be happy to be there. Whitney, you got anything? Nothing?
Um, let me speak on Whitney and right quick. So she come over today, and we had the, uh, building inspector go down there and check that window that the previous board before y'all put in as an escape route, because they walled up the door that they never should've been walled up, put a generator in front of it. So there's a window there that's got an escape window in it, but you can't, I mean, we can go around and drive, but you can't.
You can't jump over where to get to it.
So, Mark said there's a way that we can cut out, we can actually cut a door out.
Yeah.
Um, but like I talked to Whitney about today, is when we do cut that door out, we don't need to have it where it's open. So we're gonna look at putting one of those emergency alarms, when you hit that door, it goes off, because we don't need a bus sitting out there smoking, or we're just probably, the door opens. It's, that's a secure area, and it needs to stay secured, so that's, that's what we're doing there. Um, we are looking at the showers that we talked about as well, um, maybe converting a different bathroom into a complete, just a shower room. Um, because Mark said it's gonna be hard, 'cause that, that building's got concrete floors, and so you'd have to channel all the way to try to find it. So we're working on that, um, we are talking about the kitchen area, you know, like if we have the hurricane on. But the first two, I think the door's the number one priority, and then the shower's number two priority, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
All right. Any more questions? Anything? Nikki?
No, bud.
No, sure.
I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?